Is the appointed time and we have a quorum. Today's special F C meeting will start, there will be two sessions. Which will take us to ten past one o'clock. The purpose of this is to um scrutinize the estimates of the of the government to ensure that the funding they ask for will not exceed the cost for execution of policies. Let me remind members that if you'd like to follow up on your questions, please assign the reply number on the top right corner. Say for example E D B double O one. If members um if members cannot follow up on those written reply, you may submit supplementary questions. You have to submit those before the end of the meeting today. I would decide on the speaking time depending on the number of members speaking. This is about education, members, would you please press the request to speak button? Secretary please. Mister Chairman, the total expenditure on education in twenty twenty and twenty one is one hundred and twen- and twelve point three billion dollars. Of this, the recurrent education expenditure increases by seven point eight percent to ninety nine point six billion dollars, accounting for over one fifth of the total government recurrent expenditure and taking up the largest share among all policies. The recurrent expenditure in education has over ten years, that is from twenty eleven to twelve to twenty twenty and twenty one increased by seventy nine percent with an average growth rate of six point seven percent per annum. This shows the government's long-term commitment to invest in education. The current term government has devoted substantial resources to education and implemented a series of measures in the past two years. Every aspect of the education sector has benefited. In twenty twenty and twenty one, we'll consolidate the effects of these measures and at the same time keep allocating new resources to education as well as for nurturing talents and take forward the following new measures announced in the policy address and budget. For primary and secondary education, we'll enhance the manpower arrangement for vice principals in public sector schools, improve the demarcation arrangements for headship rankings as well as the manpower at the middle management level in public sector secondary schools. Upgrade the primary schools curriculum lead and post in public sector primary schools of a smaller scale. We'll also enhance the staff establishment of the boarding school, uh boarding section of A D S special schools in order to provide better services. These measures include upgrading the ranks of warden and assistant warden of boarding sections with a capa- capacity of forty or above. An increased number of assistant wardens and house parents in charge, improving the Saturday and Sunday manning ratios and providing an additional grant to the boarding sections of schools for children with physical disability, moderate intellectual disability, severe intellectual disability and visual impairment come intellectual disability to employ personal care workers or hire related services. Starting from twenty twenty and twenty one school year, we'll adjust the additional funding model for schools admitting non-Chinese speaking N C S students with an annual adjustment mechanism to enhance the support for N C S students in learning Chinese and create an inclusive learning environment. We'll provide all public sector primary and secondary schools, direct subsidy pri- scheme primary and secondary schools and special schools, which admit a relatively small number of N C S students within enhanced additional funding under the new two-tier arrangement. In addition, for five years starting from twenty and twenty one school year, we'll provide specific parent education programs for parents of N C S students. We'll also enhance the support for students with autism spectrum disorders by assisting public sector ordinary schools to deploy a tier intervention model by phases. We'll regularize the student grant for secondary day school, primary school and kindergarten students starting from twenty 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 one year and pay the examination fees for school candidate sitting for the twenty twenty one uh Hong Kong D S E. In addition, we plan to enhance, to launch the enhancement and startup grant scheme for self-financing post-secondary education to provide financial support for self-financing institutions in offering designated sub-degree undergraduate programs that meet market needs but require high startup costs. We'll also implement in the twenty and twenty one academic year pilot scheme for five cohorts to provide fellowship for local students admitted to designated top postgraduate programs that meet our development needs. A regards of the vocational and professional education, we'll implan- implement a pilot program for three years starting from twenty twenty one academic year to provide subsidies for trainees under the training and support scheme of the V T C to take part in study and exchange programs outside Hong Kong. We'll be happy to answer questions. Let me read the names, Mister Liang Yun, Mister Yip Kin Yun, Mister Shi Ok Chuen, Mister Charles Mo, Mister Doctor Kook Keh, Mister Michael Tian, Mister Leng Chi Chen, Mister Wu Chi Wei, Miss Rebecca Chen and Doctor Fernando Zhang. Mister Leng, please. Thank you. Yesterday, there was the announcement of the second round of the anti epidemic fund. I think the public thinks that it is better than nothing. What they announced there yesterday cannot achieve the purpose of alleviating um difficulties for the public. Well, the government offers forty thousand dollars and seven thousand five hundred dollars as on a one-off basis for trainers and coaches. How would it help? For tuition schools, the forty thousand dollars is only enough to pay for reinstating the premises before handing over to the landlord. It will not help them at all. In the last round, you said that if the Education Bureau has money, it would be given to regular schools and not help them. You know, you have heard them. They've been assisting regular schools by plugging the gap. They help grassroots parents to take care of their children so that they can go to work. Tutors provide services so that regular teachers can focus on teaching. Now you cast them aside. I believe that it is you who um made a suggestion of forty thousand and seven thousand five hundred dollars offered to them by the government. You have completely ignored the contributions they have made. Secretary, can you, within your own purview, earmarked an amount that doubles the figure under the fund so that these premises and these trades can continue to operate so that they can continue to provide assistance to um plug the gap? In the finance committee, what I said was, with limited resources, if I can get any, I would uh accord the priority to regular schools, that is mainstream schools. I'm sure everyone will understand. We'll have to first take care of the annual needs of mainstream schools. We have heard of comments from the public. Where resources allow, we have proposed measures to help tuition schools. There is a substantial sum in the relief measures to support employers to pay wages for the employees. Private tuition schools can also obtain funding from that, sorry, let me interrupt. Tuition schools engage tutors on a part-time basis, they will not pay M P F contributions. So they will not sub- uh benefit from the employee's um support scheme. I don't know how many tuition schools Mister Leng has talked to, different ones have has different mode of operation. I think that some of them pay for M P F, but what about the others? As the chief executive said yesterday, in the basket of relief measures, we do our best to uh cover as many people as possible. It's a waste of time. I ask if you will use the Bureau's funding to help tuition schools, coaches and tutors. I tried to answer Mister Leng's question, but I cannot give him the whole picture. When we consider these measures, it is very difficult for us to just talk about a particular case. You have to first understand the rationale. We support employers to help employees so that they can keep their jobs. Next, Mister Kim Yun. Please um press the request to speak button again. Mister Kim Yun, five minutes. I'd like to follow up on what Mister Leng said. We see that tuition schools and people who, uh coaches and tutors who help schools do need our help. So I ask the secretary to help them as far as possible. I'd like to ask about zero nine seven. This is in relation to um principals, vice principals and middle management of primary schools, um improvements in their establishment and their remuneration. Well, there are, this is a trilogy, first um turning all teaching staff as um university graduates as well as um the reform in the uh pay structure of the teaching force. In a reply, the secretary said that they have plans to introduce improvements. However, we have not seen anything yet. Because the funding application will have to go through the finance committee, but we haven't seen anything on the agenda. This is the first hurdle. So I'd like to hear from the govern- from the administration, do they have plans to um submit the application to the F C as soon as possible? That has always been our plan. If you recall, in June last year, we actually have um put it on the agenda. However, what happened subsequently caused uh the item to be unable to uh have any discussion and appro- and approval in the F C. As we know that the finance committee is progressing, we will be able to submit uh this item in the next round. Is it the case that, well, well, the finance committee is also affected by the epidemic? Does it mean that when there is normal operation of the finance committee, they will submit the uh item and give it priority? We have to take into account the progress of the finance committee. From the perspective of the Education Bureau, we will hope to um get to the front of the queue. Well, the chairperson is here, I hope that he will help. I would like to ask about another reply. Zero seven eight, Mister Ted Ho asked a question about the epidemic is mentioned that in the procurement of supplies, schools have encountered a lot of difficulties. Schools would like to resume classes at a certain time, but there are conditions to be met. First, the epidemic has to be under control. Community transmission risk should be reduced. The second condition is that anti epidemic supplies, equipment and devices to take broad body temperature will have to be in place. Schools encounter a lot of difficulties in the procurement of masks, they have to pay high prices. And we're all concerned about the quality and the standard of these masks. And worst of all, they might not even be able to get any. Mister Ted Ho's question is to ask if the administration can take up the role of a coordinator or to provide assistance instead of just giving them money. Of course, um money is one of the problems, but it's not the biggest one.
Do you think so? Secretary, Chairman, we have been doing our best. If we know that we have certain supplies available, we inform the council. We have been doing something for the primary school and for the secondary schools as well. We know that to resume school, we need to get the necessary the equipment and materials. Mister Shi Ok Chuen, oh four nine and one five five, I would like to ask some questions. Oh four nine says that the uh Hong Kong E A A would be providing anti epidemic supplies and replies says that well, appropriate mugs will be provided. What does it mean? Well, we have been told that the face mask provided to the D S E's students are poor. So I don't know what you mean by appropriate. And also you are going to give each candidate a mask. But you know that sometimes the uh they they will have to take two examinations in the afternoon, in the morning and in the afternoon. And they may have to contact many people in during the lunch break. So are you going to start the D S E examination on the twenty fourth of April? Uh you have to make up your mind, you're just saying that there may be uh adjustments. It's just two weeks before the twenty fourth. It's very unfair to these candidates because they've been working hard on this and the uh the level of persistence cannot uh be sustained for long. So please give us a quick answer and tell us whether it's going to proceed or not. Don't, don't wait until a week before the commencement date. And also on uh online learning, one five five. Zoom has been exposed to have uh security problems. And that is uh you, data of users may be transmitted back to the mainland. And Yun Cheng, the provider, has submitted the problems. And uh the minister, Taiwan, the administrative uh council, Yun, has banned Zoom. So for schools and post-secondary institutions, they use Zoom extensively. Are you going to uh refer to the uh practice or the guidelines promulgated by the Ministry of Education of Taiwan and ask schools to procure alternative uh software? One question of D S C. Actually, we have made arrangement for the D S E examination to commence on the twenty fourth of April. I've also recently published an article saying that this remains our objective. But we have to be mindful about safety of candidates. So we are monitoring the uh pand- pandemic closely. If you ask me today, I will not be able to tell you what the epidemic will look like on the twenty fourth. So the, so the objective is to start D S E on the twenty fourth, but before that, we have to monitor the situation day by day so that we know whether uh to proceed as scheduled or will not pose any hazards. But if we go, go on a, a, a trip, we have to decide uh where in ahead, uh whether we proceed or not. Or you can make a decision a week uh before the trip. But what if there's a number eight typhoon signal hoisted on that day? It is just about you, you can always change your mind. But as for D S E, there are thousands of uh candidates. I cannot say that I have made a decision today and I would go ahead, come what may, on that day. What I'm saying today is that I still want to start the D S E examination on the twenty fourth. But at the same time, I have to monitor the uh situation, uh that situation with the epidemic. Uh we are advising people to keep social distancing, which will help to contain the epidemic. So if the number of cases remain low, we would commence as shared, as announced on the twenty fourth. So that's one of the standards, that if the num- case, no- number of case, cases is low or is getting lower and lower. Well, but we have to look at the overall picture and it's is our intention to announce as soon as possible, any changes, any contingency plans that would be implemented. If on the twenty fourth, suddenly something happens and the uh endemic becomes a widespread, I cannot really proceed. Because otherwise, uh it would be very irresponsible of, of me. How about the question with Su- about Zoom? We'll continue to talk to the schools over the use of Zoom. On any e-platform or software or app, if there is a security issue and also we'll talk to the experts to see how we should handle those problems. Um Mister Charles Mo, on the question of Zoom. Actually, on the website of the Education Bureau, uh you have provided information on alternative uh software such as those provided by Microsoft, but it's just that some teachers are accustomed to Zoom. Maybe they should be advised to use other uh software. It's necessary. I want to ask question about one eight two. The reason why I ask this question is that the C C F launched a free year program to assist uh students to purchase uh mobile devices uh who are from disadvantaged background so as, so that they can tie with the school uh policy of e-learning. So it's about bring your own device policy. The students uh uh are supposed to bring the device to the, to, to their schools. If they are to be assisted. But now they need the devices, mobile devices at home because they are doing learning at home. It said that for secondary and post-secondary institutions, the level of utilization is just thirty odd percent, not very high indeed. As a paragraph seven, a re- replies say, during this period, uh class of class expansion, students may need the to do e-learning at home, but they do, may lack uh computers or devices and some low schools may uh learn such a may lend such devices to students, but not all can do this. This isn't far from my deal. Actually, I have made a number of proposals to the secretary. According to some schools that are, that have talked to me, well, they, they can use some the mobile devices under Wi-Fi one hundred. Some are tablets, the computers, which have been left idle for some years already. Although the schools have not received guidelines, saying that they can uh lend such devices to students, but such uh equipment will be written off in three years' time. I think we should not let the uh lack of policy to stand in the way of providing the device, such devices to students and we should be flexible about the bring your own device policy. On the twenty third of March, you said that the C C F uh uh application deadline could be extended, that's good, that's no need for uh any deadline, it should be uh open around uh the year. And there are also inadequacies. For example, some students do not have printers. You should find some way to help them. Some are living in some divided units where Wi- Wi-Fi or broadband service uh is not available, they may use, have to use a mobile Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi device, which is more expensive. Perhaps you should consider also helping them in this regard. Can you also relax other rules to make uh things easier for them? Thank you for your question. We're taking a, a comprehensive look on how we can help students to learn at this time. Perhaps I can ask the permanent secretary to elaborate. Chairman, on the twenty third of March, we make an announcement as referred to by Mister Charles Mo. The extension of the application deadline is precisely for one purpose. And that is during the epidemic, many students will need to use mobile devices to learn at home. And we have also relaxed the criteria under C C F scheme to all students. And we encourage uh schools to inform students and to encourage students to apply. In that letter, we have made an appeal to schools. We know that some schools have already lent that there are some devices to students. We are not saying that they can't do it. But some schools would like to apply for funding to install certain software uh in those, on those devices. Well, we are advising them to the lend the devices first and then, and apply for funding later. We know that some students do not have access to broadband service at home. And we are grateful to some charities such as uh Hong Kong Jockey Club, which has donated one hundred thousand SIM cards for them. We have asked schools to help people, to students in need of broadband service to make applications. And the schools are saying that they do have the resources to do this. Please make a strong appeal to schools because the application for the C C F subsidy has to be made through schools. Some schools are not as keen as some others. Can you make a strong appeal to these schools, to all schools, instead of just send a letter? Yes, through the schools councils and daily contact with schools, we will do so, we will make the appeals. Doctor Kook Keh, well, you are the secretary of education, you must have a great, good knowledge about the basic law, what does Article twenty seven says? Well, I think you, you, you know that, well, that is, uh, Hong Kong residents shall have freedom of speech. But since you have a Zoom office, you have been trying to censor people's thought. This is about question oh four oh forty. You have uh give advice to thirteen teachers and warned nine. So you are scrutinizing teachers. And if uh s- school principals do not cooperate with you, you may want to, you may also fire them. Since when have schools subject to political screening? Do they have to comply with all your political requirements and be familiar with Xi Jinping thought? Since June last year, you say that they are, they have been involved in the anti extrapulsion build movement, some of these people, some of these protesters have arrested, have been arrested and sent to jail. So as a secretary uh for education, what are you going to do to let people understand that the meaning of freedom of speech and uh and do you have to? and do you have to follow what the what the Cultural Revolution's uh requirements are, then that is you have to, you have to comply with the mainstream political thought.
The objective of education is to train students to have independent thinking and in order to identify differentiate um um false information from what people have said, say, say, for example, what the member has said. What are the fallacies? The Education Bureau has always has the well-being of students and teachers. Well, where has, where does he say in your mission that you uh will try to do otherwise? Doctor Kookake, please don't fling accusations against me. I'm just here to chair the meeting. You can't just rely on your loud voice. Secretary, as we have said in very clearly in the answer, teachers, if they have made inappropriate remarks, if they have made in pro- um inflammatory remarks, provocative remarks, then they should be disciplined. Of course, teachers are entitled to their views, but when they speak, if they use hate speech, if you insult other people, then we should not let them get away with it. I don't have much time. That means that um if you think what people, what teachers said are inappropriate or contains hatred, then they will have to be disciplined. Should teachers first submit their thoughts and their speech to you to, for you to decide whether they are um clear from these inappropriate contents or uh hate speech in order to avoid being sacked? I'm not in charge of dealing with disciplining teachers for misconduct. Then why did you say something? You said that if the principal is substandard, then they have to be sacked. It's difficult for me to explain the whole thing. And Doctor Quok's been interrupting and interjecting. I don't know how to go on. Well, that means that you have to do better in education so that people will respect one another. I don't just speak for myself, I speak on behalf of the Education Bureau. In the education system, if there is misconduct on the part of teachers, uh schools and principals should deal with it accordingly. It's not just my own view. Mister Michael Tian. Well, I have asked four questions, the fourth, my need a lot of question, perhaps I will focus on the third one. The second round in the anti-pandemic fund finally tuition schools are included. Well, do you include these interest classes, say, for example, language courses? Are they included? If not, should they be waiting for the third round? What about the private candidates? Well, it says that the D S E will take place on the twenty fourth of April. Will you give them a date, say, on the, say, on the twenty first and twenty second? You will make an announcement whether it's going to go ahead on the twenty fourth. Can you at least give a, give a cutoff date? And I'm very, and I'm very concerned about one thing. Well, with nationalization of kindergartens, it is, they have encountered a lot of difficulties. Now there is a wave of withdrawal of enrollment. A number of them have closed. What if t- if a parent wants to get back, get, want to get a refund and they have to continue to pay for their teaching staff and staff? What assistance will you give schools and kindergartens if they are met with a with an exodus of students? Well, during SARS, there was a suspension of fifty-one days. Now, I don't know how long it will, is going to be, a hundred days or more. What did we learn from SARS? Different schools will will catch up on time um lost. Do you know the information? Well, uh does every school use Zoom? If they can't catch up, would they be able to make it up in the future? Now it's changed from a conventional way of teaching to homeschool for a prolonged period of time. What can the administration do to help schools with different levels in order to get them to catch up? Otherwise, it'll be too late if you realize that they can't in a few years' time. I'll try to answer the four questions. First, interest classes, they are not registered schools. So under the education system, it's difficult for us to take them into account. We see them just uh like other ser- other service providers. I do understand that D S E candidates are under tremendous pressure. I very much want to tell, give them a concrete date. If you ask, if you try to get an answer out of me today or tomorrow, I'd I'd say that it will start on the twenty fourth of April. If something happens, which makes us think that it can't go ahead, what all we can do is to to announce it as soon as possible. In the past few days, it is, situation seems to have to be improving, so I'm quite confident that it can go ahead on the twenty fourth. We have made arrangements to ensure safety. But still, when you go out in the street, when you take transportation, uh students will take a little bit more risk. We will give as much information to students as possible to allay their worries. We can't control the epidemic, so we can't give a definite date. On kindergarten, as far as we know, that four kindergartens may in the May next year close. In the past years, there has been nine, six or seven that have closed. So far, we don't see any signs that it's going to be serious. Different trades face different difficulties. Well, uh those who have closed will not need your help. What about those who are about to close? We provide support to employers, there is assistance. Well, after this, well, for SARS, there is a fifty-one days of suspension. What did you learn from it so that you can apply your experience this time? Well, over ten years has elapsed. We can make better use of e-learning. E-learning cannot completely replace classroom teaching. But given the situation, that is one way. E-learning is not the only way. Some schools will send documents, reading materials, exercises to students. There are different um ways. So what about catching up? Is it down to the schools or you are, you will help them? When we look at education, it is by different um different periods. Say, for example, junior primary, senior primary, for senior primary, say, primary five uh that there will be, there is a a um a deadline, but for the others, there is time for them to catch up. Mister Long Che Che. Yesterday, there was an announcement of a number of measures. Schools, tuition schools can get some kind of help. It is a good thing. Extracurricular teachers did not get any help. Well, now they get seven thousand five hundred dollars. I don't know if you will require schools to provide a list, or you're going to directly help them. If there is a, if there is a requirement for refer or for referral from schools, then, well, there may be some misunderstanding. Last time, we thought that they would be, they would get some assistance, but they did not. So I'd like to get some clarification. The second part is in relation to STEM education. I know that some school managers raise funds to promote STEM education. You have a funding scheme of two million dollars. I know that several schools have got together to organize something together. The subsidy and funding is good. Schools with insufficient resources can share it, but two million is not enough. They have to buy teaching equipment and materials, and it costs a lot. Can the secretary increase the funding amount or put in place a matching scheme with the business sector? Well, I'd like to hear from the secretary. I would defer to Mrs. Hong, the P S, who is in charge of that, to explain. About the relief measures announced yesterday. Interest class, uh people who help with savers speaking or conductors. We will try to get a authentication or certification from principals. If this, if schools plan to engage these people to help, and if the, if these people don't get any help from other areas, we will. Just a one-off seven thousand five hundred, is it too little? I read about some um interviews. It's a one-off seven thousand five hundred. We don't know how long the epidemic will last. For the others, you give them three months to half a year subsidy. How come this one is just one-off? Different cases are different. We have to take into account the measures and the re- the relief measures announced by the Home Affairs, or defer to the P S. We do fully understand the concerns of the tutors. Before we launched the relief measures yesterday, we have already spoken to schools. We understand that not all interest classes can um be taught using electronic means, but as far as possible, they should do that and they will be paid. Extracurricular activities funded by the government. We have relaxed the requirements and they can disperse advanced payment. The classes lost can be made up later by me, say, having more frequent classes. So there can be made up classes, and we ask schools to do that.
Or maybe I can say something about STEM later? Uh Mrs. Hong, I can, I I shall be brief. Well, given different uh levels of assistance to schools on STEM, they can use the resources such as the Q E fund, uh there is a funding scheme involving two million dollars of funding. If schools give priority to STEM education, they can use the funding flexibly and also normal funding for schools such as the Lumsam Grant, lifelong learning grant. If they have topics related to STEM, they can also utilize those funds. As for the involvement of outside uh service providers, we um do not have any proposal to use a matching grant, but O G C I O has a one million dollar funding scheme or a pilot scheme on innovative lab learning. Schools and utilize the fund to to buy I T equipment and to use outside service providers to provide learning and teaching to students. Mister Wu Jiwei, five minutes. Thank you. Uh the secretary refer to warnings and repephemonts, letters issued to teachers. I'm not trying to argue with you uh the right and wrong of it. But among the students, well, they would, they, sometimes they are worried about these cases. And they may want to do some self-censorship is as a result. So there will be a rippling effect arising from the action taken by the Education Bureau. Or you have your views on certain things, but the fact is, your position will cause a rippling effect. And teachers will have to exercise a higher level of self-restraint. It may not be good for education, so it's a question of getting the right balance. Let me now get to D S E. Secretary, you are saying that you are keen to start on the twenty fourth of April. I've received views from some parents. They understand uh whether the pandemic can be put under control is beyond your power. It depends on whether the government is uh reactive and slow in responding to the situation. But parents are concerned that would the, the D S E be canceled if we uh continue like this? If the control of the epidemic is is not to your satisfaction, and then you may say that the twenty fourth of April is not the right date. Can you give them assurance, give the parents assurance? The D S E will, might be deferred, but it will not be canceled. Uh we understand the issues with students, so we are very careful in handling complaints uh against teachers. Well, in many cases, we we have ruled that there's no case to answer. So we are trying to be fair, but teachers should be aware of their responsibility. Something should not be said by a teacher, for example, using foul language openly. They have to be mindful about the influence on They have to be mindful about the, uh, influence on students. We may disagree on certain details. It's not that we want, we do not, we want to impose, uh, uh, an immutable position, particularly on political issues about office of teachers. Regarding D S E, we have been, uh, receiving opinions, uh, on different things and whether we should start the examination on the twenty fourth of April. Schools, teachers and students all want to start as scheduled on the twenty fourth. And the other thing is that, uh, they would like to have the examination. If we have to, we can, we should defer it, but, uh, they don't want to cancel it. But the reality is that if one day the, the uh, epidemic evolves in such a way that we cannot allow the people to gather to sit examinations, then we have to make a decision. Because, uh, whatever we do may impinge on what happens next, the, uh, admission of a student to universities, et cetera. We have been talking to stakeholders on, uh, what we can do. Should there be a deferral? What dates will be available? But there's a, a limit. We, we cannot decide, for example, defer the examination to the end of this year. And we cannot keep, uh, ca- the candidates uh, in a state of preparation indefinitely. At a certain date, if we have, make the decision that it cannot go on, then we have to do it. And then perhaps we have to refer to the, the, the grades in school examinations, et cetera, for an assessment. Uh, that's what I have already stated in my, uh, article. There's something that I cannot ignore. When, um, the marking methodology or scoring methodology is different from, uh, what we had in the past, then perhaps a local, uh, university admissions may be able to cope, but what about overseas universities? How could they judge the, uh, levels of attainment? Well, if we were to go down this route, we would use a scientific, uh, method as best we can. Of course, it's, of course, different from, uh, examination results. Maybe, uh, the universities, uh, would have to do more to do, to assess and screen applications. Local universities are always free to do what they want in regard to admission. For overseas universities, uh, for example, U S universities, they have, uh, their own systems for admission. Uh, and they don't just rely on D S E examination. Uh, for the U K, they also offer conditional offers. And we would, uh, we can also ask the school principals to, uh, provide a written, uh, assessment or recommendation. Of course, there is bound to be some, uh, impact. We understand the importance of D S E. We don't want to change the system itself. But should one day the, uh, epidemic forces us to make changes, I have to bear this in mind as a possibility. I want to follow up, uh, the question, oh, three, three, uh, send student. Oh, oh, three. Uh, the percentage of S, S E N student has increased from, uh, seven point eight percent to nine point one percent in primary schools, for secondary schools, eight point from eight point six percent to ten point one percent. The golden period of, uh, providing remedies is the sixth, from six to nine years of age. If we compare primary schools and secondary schools, secondary schools are a matter of concern because they don't get sufficient uh, support upon progression to secondary school. Because only thirty-three percent of secondary school teachers are get training on, on S E N. Uh, primary, uh, teachers are, percentage, uh, is much higher. So the, we are concerned about the, uh, support provided to uh, S E N students when they progress from primary to secondary, uh, schools. How, can, what can you do to increase the number of trained schools? And already I said, uh, some members said that you are not alive to public opinion. I have to say this to the secretary, where you have, uh, affairs ignored, uh, the problem faced by tuition centers. Or yesterday you responded to the aspirations of certain people, including the, uh, the group that I represent. For example, dancing schools, uh, registered institutions and some tuition schools, uh, uh, operates, uh, on, uh, big premises. And even with the subsidy and support, they may have to close down. The government has advised them not to lay off people, but what, what, what can they do if, uh, the financially they cannot cope? What if they have to lay off people after receiving the, uh, subsidies? Uh, would there be any criminal liability? And with the social unrest, uh, we don't expect school to resume before the summer vacation. For example, for the uh, primary two or, uh, students, they just received three months of, uh, uh, learning, education in the three, in, in the school year, how can they be assisted when they have to progress to the next grade? And also, uh, some suffer from a lack of resources such as a computer, uh, broadband service, when they have to get, uh, uh, e-learning. I know some assistants have been provided by charities, but what, what will the Education Bureau to do this? On the question of S E N teacher training, well, there is a historical background to it. When we, uh, promote inclusive education. And also that was the time when we have introduced a new secondary curriculum. So the training provider at the time, uh, was more focused on the new curriculum, so we need to get more, uh, secondary stu- uh, teachers trained to take care of S E N students. On, uh, the question of providing, uh, help and assistance to different, uh, op- operators, for example, tuition schools, uh, are of different sizes and, and they serve different groups of, uh, students. It's difficult to, uh, cover all comprehensively in every aspect. As for the resources to support, uh, e-learning, uh, well, I think, uh, I would defer to the announcement to be made by the Labor Welfare Bureau, because, uh, that, that would covered, uh, the whole ground in- instead of just on education. Uh, we know that the, uh, learning gap may widen in, in the meantime. If the teaching takes place at school, the students may learn at a different, uh, pace. And now they, they, they may read books as, at home and they, the development, the pace of development may be different. But schools should assess their students to, to inform them on how they can support learning of students. We should take a longer term view. Uh, if we look, uh, ahead for three years, maybe we can catch up for what has happened in the past three months. But if certainly we have to change, uh, the learning mode from, uh, to, to, uh, e-learning or online learning, and many students do not have the equipment at home. We have done a lot, for example, lending computers through the C C R. We facilitate the procurement of tablets. Many different organizations have provided uh, internet services, uh, in the form of SIM cards. We'll continue to, um, try to understand the needs of students through schools. So it's to provide more timely and appropriate help.
Next, Mister Doctor Fernando Jones. Well, about the D S E, whether it is going to go ahead. There is a recent survey saying that, uh, students and candidates are faced with um, unprecedented anxiety. If you're going to sit for a public examination, you will have to be mentally prepared. So psychologically you will be highly strong. So you have to explain to the candidates very clearly and in no uncertain terms whether this, the examination is going to go ahead. At other times, um, say, for example, i- if it's a typhoon, then of course it's not going to go ahead, but the situation is different. There is still some uncertainty with this epidem- epidemic. You will have to set a date. Perhaps, uh, set a date that's, uh, bef- ten days before. On the before the fourteenth of April, you, you will make an announcement about whether the D S E is going to go ahead. Of course, there will be a, a postponement if, um, there is inclement, uh, weather. I think that's what Mister Shu Gao Chen was asking. You have to state with clarity what you plan to do, so that people will not be in a li- in a limbo. For S E N students, well, now a lot of people use online learning, they use YouTube, they use Zoom. I really appreciate that. Well, um, A D H, A D H D, uh, autistic students, N E S students, students with learning difficulties, you have support measures for them. But now they don't have, uh, personal contact. This will affect them. Trying to catch up will be difficult. For those who are going to go to primary schools. They go from S C C C to primary school. If they go to a mainstream school, they will have to have an assessment done. But they don't have personal, um, treatment or training anymore. How do you assess them? To, uh, which school they are going to go to, special schools or mainstream schools? You will have to reconsider the whole thing. I know that in the boarding section of special schools, there is a lack of protective gear. Well, for some students, they need personal help to help them brush their teeth or to help them, uh, have a bath. They have to change their protective gear. With every student, you need to provide them with it. A lot of members have asked about the D S E. The angle may be different, but our goal is to try to tell students as soon as possible. My goal is to have the examination on the twenty fourth of April, but we'll continue to work on it. Unless there is a drastic change with the situation, next week I probably come out to say the same thing. I will still have to take into account any unexpected changes in situation. I understand what members are trying to get at. I'll consider it and I will regularly make announcements. We explain to you what our considerations are and what we try to achieve. Communication is very important. Support to S E N students. I do admit that without personal contact and you rely on parents to provide the training and the treatment, it is very, it is very different. So, see, from C C C to primary one, we are talking to, with the Social Welfare Department. Boarding section. We'll provide more resources to the boarding section of special schools. We'll ask them what, again, what they need. And we will provide assistance and resources as far as possible. Next, Mister Holden Chow, five minutes. Thank you. Yesterday, the, the government announced a second round under the fund. I thank the Education Bureau. I myself, Mister Long Chi Chau and Mister Wilson all has been talking to them for a very long time. Well, we have changed, uh, to teleconferencing to follow up on, um, childcare centers and tuition schools. Finally, we see some help going to, going their way and I thank you. If they are registered tuition schools, they, with the bureau, they get forty thousand dollars. I understand that, uh, some, uh, sports coaches will get seven thousand five hundred one-off subsidy. For interest classes, I say, uh, drawing classes, dancing, swimming. If they don't meet the requirement of, uh, registration, can they get that subsidy? Uh, some companies will get the five, the, the nine thousand dollars under the employee, employee support scheme. Some of these, some people may be self-employed and not properly employed by the company. Will stay, will they still get the nine thousand dollars? There are people who are not registered tutors with the, uh, Education Bureau. Will they get any help? Under the support scheme, you are eligible if you make M P F contribution. Different people may have different employment arrangements. So we try to do different things for them. We may we might have left, um, someone out, no matter what we do. We can have further discussions on the details. Back to education, if they are registered schools, then we can give them an additional forty thousand dollars. And if they provide services through schools, say, uh, they teach, uh, sports. And if they provide services through schools, say, they teach sports, flower arrangement or drawings, if schools have used them or if schools have plans to use them in the future, as long as the schools can give us proof, we will give them the $7,500. Of course, the schools will have to be responsible for the people they hire. Say flower arrangement or tea ceremony. If it is a regular class, it will be included, but we can't say that it will include everyone. I would like to ask a follow-up question. You talk about contact with schools or arrangements with schools. So as long as they can, schools can prove that there is an arrangement, they'll be able to get the money? Yes. Well, for people who have only delivered one talk at the school and they're included, no. They are, they will take care of people who have a regular arrangement with the school. Mr. Ray Chen, thank you. Is 020 is paying examination fees for candidates. Now it only covers some school candidates or those who repeat. Private candidates are not included. The administration said that if they include private candidates, there is a risk of abuse. If I sit for the examination this year and next year I enter as a private candidate, will you waive my examination fees? With the epidemic, people might have, people may underperform. And next year, they may not sit in the examination as a school candidate, but a private candidate. But the only fear you have is that it will be abuse. But if you sit for the examination this year and you do it again next year, you will be, the number of people will be limited. It looks like that we are pressuring the secretary, but it's not the case. Teachers, parents, schools are very concerned. The priority, of course, is to deal with the epidemic. You talk about going to universities and articulation, but we don't even know what is going to happen next year. Fighting the epidemic and staying alive is very important. In reply to a question, the secretary said, well, you can't set a date because if there is a typhoon, it will be postponed. Well, that is different. Because if there is a typhoon aid, we know that it is going to be postponed. So there is a certainty. Now there is none. It's like the Olympics. If you're going to enter the Olympics, you have to keep training. If you're going to sit for a public examination, you have to keep revising. So you do need a deadline. It's decided that on the 24th is going to go ahead. But the situation may change. There may be a community outbreak. You might have started with one or two examinations. The rest, however, will have to be postponed. You have to keep doing risk assessment. Can you at least give us some indicators? Say, if there is no particular increase in the number of confirmed cases. If the number of new cases stay the same, is the public exam going to go ahead? If there is a huge increase, say, a 100% increase in confirmed cases, is the next subject going to be postponed? What if someone in the examination venue is a confirmed case? It's even worse if it is the invigilator. You may not be able to answer the question, but you can't dodge the questions. Some people ask about the result. I don't know what is going to be, like a curve or... But what if the overall performance of candidates on the low side, would you have other ways to deal with it?
Chairman, I think Mr. Chen is better than me in expressing what has to be said. Actually, I was talking about similar things like Mr. Chen. As I've said, the target date is still the 24th. But of course, we have to monitor the epidemic. If there's a major outbreak, of course, I have to put a halt to it. So I'm saying similar things. Is it that we can get some objective criteria? It's difficult. On the 27th, before the 27th of March, things seem to have become stable. But then on the 27th of March, a number of Hong Kongers returned to Hong Kong from Europe and from the US. So there was a possibility that a community outbreak would follow. So it's difficult to rely on past data to say that we'll do certain things or we'll not do certain things. So we have to assess what might happen in the future before making a decision. The basic principle is just the same. Well, I have made a decision that we would like to get it started on the 24th of April. But at the same time, we have to monitor the situation daily. And you have to come up with contingencies on how to handle the situation where an invigilator has come down with a disease. But yes, we have to consider this. What if we have already set to examinations and then there was an outbreak at an appropriate time? We'll make announcements. Mr. Dr. Chen Chong Tai. Well, it's difficult to imagine that by giving out, handing out of $100 billion, you are, or you get this all-round criticism. Please don't just rely on administrative officers working behind closed door. And now the tuition schools will get $40,000 each. The big one, we change operations would get. Would $40,000 be sufficient? Of course not. Well, it's an insult to the tuition schools. Are you going to help them to pay the severance payment for laying off their people? Well, you know that the retail shop downstairs would get $80,000. We have been told that Hong Kong is a service economy. And yet, in giving out assistance, you tend to ignore service industry, hairdressers, et cetera. Doctors, you can... healthcare workers, you're going to help them by giving them $300. Isn't that an insult? You're going to give $40,000 to each registered tuition school. But what about interest classes, piano teachers, et cetera? And now you're closing down the beauty parlors, they get a subsidy. But what about these people who have been ignored? Yes, your sector, insurance sector, Mr. Chairman, will get help. And this is a bureaucratic way of thinking. If you're registered, you get a help. Do you understand why you have been heavily criticized, Secretary? Mr. Leng Yuchong asks you questions. Mr. Yip, Leng Yuchong, Mr. Yip Keng Yuen, and even the pro-establishment members ask you. Trade groups, about-what pay group, teachers in piano schools. Are you going to consider their cases? Yes or no? Let me clarify a point. In January, we asked all registered schools to suspend teaching and not tuition schools. We are talking about informal schools. Yes, schools, informal schools. You cannot call yourself a school if you are not registered. It's a violation of the education ordinance. Well, what I thought, are you going to consider their cases? I don't want to report down on money. I think ordinary people in Hong Kong don't want to back the government for this. Or on DSE, you say it's the 24th of April. You insist that it will start on the 24th. And now the anti, the prohibition of crowd gathering would end on the 23rd of April. Are examination venues exempted in respect of the crowd gathering ban? Where are you going to get a notification on the prohibition of crowd gathering? I just asked a question about when they would, they would get the notification. Dr. Chen Chong Tai, please, please. Secretary, please start your answer now. The ban on the crowd gathering is in respect of public places. An examination venue is in a school or in a classroom, it's not a public place. And if necessary, we can apply for exemptions. So the two are not really linked. If the ban is still enforced, then it would have a bearing on what, on how we consider whether to proceed or not. You can press the button again. It would be your turn very soon. But we have to respect one another. Mr. Vincent Chang, good morning. This is about 019. That is non-Chinese-speaking students in the reply. It said that in 2021, you're going to adjust the grant for NCS students. Certainly, we would like to get more resources to help NCS in learning Chinese. There's a room for improvement, but I do have worries. How can we assess if the funding is utilized effectively? Some schools organize group jumping classes for NCS schools, but it doesn't seem to be very relevant. In the reply, you said that you have some assessment tools. But they are not very objective, right? How can you assess the additional resources provided could result in the NCS students getting better job employment prospects? We have more than about 10,000 NCS students in kindergartens. Are you going to help them more so that they can get a good start in education? I defer to my permanent secretary. Ethic minorities or NCS students have special needs. So we provide subsidy to schools. The schools are not required to do anything special. We understand that they need to be assisted in help learning Chinese. So there's a fixed grant to schools if there are NCS students which are certain ratio. Yes, of course, we need to assess the outcome of the provision of grant. So we have colleagues going to, doing school inspections and monitor how the grant is utilized. And the schools need to come up with a new plans, which we would assess if the objectives have been reached, but more is needed. We're actually going to do a tracking study, especially in respect of learning Chinese. We have certain tools which would enable us to trace the development of individual students individually and also collectively. There will be a longitudinal study that we are going to start in the coming year to look at the learning outcome of students. It's not like the territory-wide systemic study which would inform us of what the students overall are doing. This will be more the focus. So we'll trace their educational attainment through such a study. What about kindergartens? We, of course, encourage parents of NCS students to enroll their students to local kindergartens so that they get the right learning environment from the start. In the past years, we offer briefing sessions to parents, not just in English, but also through interpretations, their languages. And we also go to the activity centers for ethnic minorities to provide information to parents so that they don't have to go to the briefing sessions. And also, we ask the kindergartens to provide appropriate information in both Chinese and English. And the icon for the English version should be conspicuous. Just hope that this would increase the number of NCS students enrolled in our local kindergartens. During the current epidemic, supporting students to do the learning at school is difficult. And in particular, it's more difficult for NCS students. Dr. Facil Aleng, we are going to have thousands of students sitting, the DSE students. They are very anxious about the arrangements. For example, some parents are worried that candidates will have the use a common toilets during examination. Please make all the preparation. And please make an announcement not too late. For example, by 15th of April, I have questions about EDB 163 and 165.
In your reply to the first and the second question, I can describe them as just a run-of-the-mill in relation to the moral education. Moral uh education. I think it's something to do with the radical views of people and in two thousand nine. It's been eleven years, I have never stopped. Um dealing with it, well for the for liberal studies. I think people criticize the teaching of it. There has been some complaints that are substantiated regarding uh teachers making remarks. Uh that are hostile to the police uh uh sit in. Saying that they hope the whole family will die. A lot of these people are liberal studies teachers. I have made complaints, I have given, I have provided evidence. And you ask the schools to deal with them themselves. And in one six five, you only answer one question, you said you have completed. A hundred and twenty five complaints, forty two of them are not substantiated, forty seven of them. You said that you only uh you will only warn them. You will only reprimand them for teachers uh. That have committed misconduct, you are lenient. At the same time, you are cruel to others. Well, you see that, well, people who are in their early teens have committed crime. Some people advocate breaking the law to achieve justice. Well, they have been using uh the teaching materials of Professor um Dai. A lot of a stu- a lot of teachers or parents don't like it because they don't want their children to be taught. Uh these inappropriate materials, as a result, they had to send their children overseas. At primary or um secondary four. There has been a number of um. Cases involving really young. People. We feel sad about them, it it shows that we have the responsibility to do something. We do have to do something. It's not the case that we have to wait for a consensus before we do anything. It's not the case that we have to wait for consensus to do anything. We hope to do something more in relation to moral education, I have to ask. Well, you have, there has been a number of cases, some of them are substantiated, what what is the discipline and sanction? Well, if you are lenient towards them, that means you have committed dereliction of duty and you fail society. Wait for the secretary to answer. In dealing with teachers misconduct, we answer in a in a impartial way. Whether it is in answer to uh pro-government or or um. Democrats, if teachers have committed misconduct. We follow. The established mechanism. We take into account the gravity of the case before we decide what to do. It may be a revocation or registration, it may be a warning letter, it may be an advisory letter. We will make a decision that is proportionate to the to the facts of the case. We hope that the public will understand from what they can see that we are impartial in dealing with these cases, the time is up. Now you can press the button again, Mister Ted Ho, five minutes. I would like to follow up on zero eight four and zero nine five. Well, I think Miss Priscilla Leng is criticizing the secretary for not doing enough. In um following uh the line to take of communist education teaching. What is happening in Hong Kong is that. Education is being politicized. In ninety five. In relation to the hundred and seventy one teachers being complained against. You talk about inappropriate teaching materials, but you fail to give us the number of cases. In zero eight four. You talk about provision of a basic law education. There has been a a number of reports about biased teaching materials. I asked you, who wrote them? You said experts of um uh basic law, the constitution. I don't know whether that includes Priscilla Leng. What about the group of people that is responsible for vetting textbooks? I've been asking you for the name list, you refuse to give us the name list. You said that, oh, well, uh that will be a conflict of interest, this and that. I think that what is happening is that, well, you are turning our education um. To uh being pro-communist. And you refuse to give us information about who vet textbooks. And you said that education should be professional led. People complain about, people complain about inappropriate teaching material or because. Joshua Wong is mentioned. And Priscilla Leng made complaints about a really innocuous innocuous remark. The chilling effect is taking place in school campus. They are they are required to support the Communist Party and support. Uh the country and toe the line of um the Communist Party, if you deny that, then make public. The number, the the people that you have consulted in providing basic law teaching material. Is it too embarrassing to us to say that, to give us their names? Uh are you the gatekeeper uh saying that um? You, well, um Hong Kong is to the south of um. China or? Education to teach people to be patriotic is necessary. I don't know what you mean by pro-communist education. Textbooks and teaching materials, whether they are published by the government or vetted by the government. Are in the public domain. If members find problems, you may point it out. It's not about who uh compile the information or write the information. If you are unhappy with the way uh they are, then we will consider it and if we find that to be true, we will change. The fourth time, why can't you give us the name list? If there are problems with textbooks, it's not the case of um. What we are going to, who who write them, this is the sixth time, who, why can't you give us the list? Now, what are the difficulties you have in publish publishing the name list? Well, there is a risk in corruption. If they, if people know about uh the people involved in vetting textbooks. And we also want to let um the vetting panel. Know that they can do their job without fear of failure. They are people with expertise and they are professionals. Publish um publishing the name list will have an adverse impact, Mister Abram Scheck. Education is more than teaching, learning. It's about teachers caring about the students. How to use the textbooks. To teach the students to be. A good person, to teach them about values of our race. Of our society so that it can be passed to the next generation, that is education. We have to review the situation. We have to teach the future pillars of society how to lead. Our society, we have to teach them to accept reality. Because the world is now borderless, we have to teach better. Teachers in the education university will have to be taught how to under. Taught to understand that they are part of our society. You should do it well, you may use Zoom or others, it's a very good thing. I use that to teach my two grandchildren, it's no different from going to school. Teaching is not just about schools, families are important too. There are a lot of doctors here, a lot of clever people, it's high time for you to. Re to reflect upon yourselves, to look at the teaching material. Don't politicize education, don't politicize education. Don't be influenced by. Parties when you train teachers, you have to teach teachers. Whether it is personal or not, they have to be punished if they should be punished. We have lost generations of students in the past, we are all parents. We are all members of society. Cash payout is not a problem. How to use it well, how to use it on education? To make our younger genera- our future generation strong so that they can put to be, they can be put to use in society. Teaching and learning is not just about examination. When do we have the examination? Yes or no? Yes or no? D S E candidates can't sleep. You give, you put them under pressure, it will scar them for life. G C E. Is cancelled, why? Because people are confident with the system. Universities can say that, well. The education system is not worse than I B or G C E, I am a chairperson of the E S F. Why can others not sit for the examination? Students don't have to be put under pressure for of the public examination, they can go to university. Over the years, they can use the system you teach them, they can use the scores to go to university. Why is it that the D S E result is so important? It's just examination and examination and safety. What is more important than examination? Whatever the arrangement is, whatever the decision is, you can make sure that it happens. You do it, you cancel it, like I B. Give some peace to our students so that they can do it. It's a humble request.
Thank you for your comment. But this epidemic has presented us with many issues to consider. Whether we are talking about learning or moral education or uh the. Ability to withstand challenges. Unlike other international examinations. We do not. A system whereby we can establish a high correlation with uh school grades and examination grades. So there are certain shortcomings in this system. Some people may think this are not reasonable uh to just rely on school grades. Of course, health is of paramount importance. So I cannot be as uh so specific as to say that what would what will or will not happen. I I'm satisfied with your answer, but you've never been a teacher. Teachers understand their students, if the teachers can write a report on every student. It would be better than any certificate that you may want, you can give them. Whether you get a a grade A, B or C or or forty five marks. It it doesn't really depend on what the teacher has done. Mister Ma Feng-Go, uh reply one six nine and one seventy are relevant. Uh after the alp epidemic. I have met. The secretary a number of times, I told him that those who are offering. Tuition service or learning classes are were under tremendous difficulties. The secretary said he was sympathetic and asked for certain the s- support. To help them, the secretary. Said that he couldn't do much and he would issue a letter to advise them to go for e-learning. So I'm happy to learn yesterday that you are going to help these teachers. Can the secretary tell us some more uh details? I believe uh res- uh a lot of resources have been saved due to the epidemic. How would the Education Bureau? Utilize these safe universities so that the schools can develop a better e-learning environment. Or to open up more school facilities for sports development. Well, we are working out some details with the operators, with the relevant sectors. Whether we're talking about teachers or service providers of extracurricular activities. If they go to a school to teach a. If they go to a school to teach a certain courses or to provide training to students in sports. Uh, the Education Bureau would give them the subsidy of seven thousand five hundred dollars. We rely on the certification provided by uh schools so that we can help these trainers. We cover a very wide field, even arts classes and performance uh training would be covered. On the question of resources, in answering Mister Abraham Shag's question, I already said that it's a good opportunity uh in the context of the epidemic uh for all of us to the do more in promoting e-learning. We don't know how the epidemic will last, or perhaps it will come back next academic year. So how could we arrange the learning and teaching? How can we support learning at home? How do we promote the reading? All of these are priority areas for my bureau ahead. We want to move ahead and make progress to, together. Opening up the school facilities has always been uh our priority task. We've been working with Home Affairs uh Bureau and more and more the organizations are participating. We want to enhance the measures to benefit more people. Oh, after all, the facilities in our schools are also social facilities. We hope more, there could be uh a greater degree of public access. I want to ask a further question about opening up the school facilities. Can you provide more resources to schools now that some resources have been saved? For example, insurance coverage so that schools can do a better job in opening up. If we are talking about insurance coverage, third-party insurance coverage for the school facilities, it's already done. Before activities are conducted uh in the schools, the organizers will have to take that up. Mister Tommy John, uh my questions are related to reply oh six one. Well, when the question was submitted, of course, there was no announcement last year, a lot yesterday. And I know that the tuck shops and also the um s- uh meal lunchbox suppliers would be uh covered by the assistance or subsidies. If I remember correctly, each lunchbox supplier would get a subsidy of ten thousand dollars. Some of these suppliers are big operators. They provide millions of lunchboxes. They can also apply for the, another support of half of the uh payroll cost. Secretary? Uh, it's a, the subsidy for lunchbox suppliers is separate from the, the other subsidies for the purpose of safeguarding jobs in the market. So they can apply for both if they are qualified as well. And tuck shops, you can pay the rent. And if they have employees, they can also apply assistance under the initiative to safeguard jobs. For tuck shops, uh canteens and lunchbox suppliers. When we offer them subsidies, we do not consider whether they will be assisted through other schemes. Of course, they need to meet certain criteria if they have employees. But our support will not be dependent on whether they will get and other forms of support elsewhere. For my school, uh we employ people to provide lunchboxes to our primaries and secondary schools. Can the school sponsoring bodies apply for your support? Because we also contribute to their M P F accounts. That is to say, if the schools employ people to do this. Are you talking about the initiative to safeguard jobs? In the, in respect of schools, government schools, A D schools or D S S schools are already funded by the government. So relatively speaking, they are less impacted than others by the epidemic. So the, so D S S schools cannot apply to, under the support scheme for the purpose of safeguarding jobs. Well, you have been uh checking our accounts. The canteen staff and uh are employed under the self-finance arrangement. They are not in the D S S school accounts. They employ their own people because they want to have direct control. I have been participating in these, uh, in the operation of the, of these canteens. I hope you can take another look at their, at their qualification. Some government schools and A D schools are unscrupulous. They, these canteens and tuck shops have no business to do, but still they charge, the schools charge them rent. Some teachers did not allow students to patronize tuck shop because they consider the suppliers belonging to the so-called Wu Cam. Would the Education Bureau look into this kind of behavior and advise the school management to follow up the, the problem? Well, all along, we don't want the political propaganda or campaign to penetrate schools. We will look at the cases with the school suppliers. All right, Doctor Chang Chong Tai, two minutes? You want the twentieth of April, school, we consume. Well, when would the Education Bureau know that the ban on public gathering would have an effect on the resumption of school? And if some candidate uh become confirm, con- confirmed cases of the epidemic, would the entire examination venue be closed down? And if some candidates cannot take uh other subjects in the examination, how would the grades be determined? Or we don't know whether the prohibition on public ga- or crowd gathering would be extended. And now the, uh, in the examination hall, um, seats will be uh put at a greater distance in between. So even if a candidate has come down with the infection, other candidates might not be regarded as close contacts. So much will depend on what really happens. If it's just an examination hall and if someone gets infected in other, in another the location, the other candidates will not be regarded as close contacts.
If a candidate cannot sit for the examination because of uh illness, the Hong Kong E A A can conduct an assessment based on the result. So if the candidate cannot sit the, sit for the examination, then the Hong Kong E A A will uh have to gauge the performance based on other things. Yes, if the candidate has to leave the examination venue to go home, the Hong Kong E A A can base the result on the school performance. The next session will start at eleven ten.